All right, we're good? All right. Okay, we are going to... It has a little power sign on it. Aren't you a tech guy? It has a little power sign on it.
Yeah, right down there.
It's just hard to find that.
All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It is 6:02, Thursday, December 18th. Our school building committee meeting. Nobody's listening to me. I need a... So, first order of business, we're opening the meeting with a roll call. Thank you, Dave, the AC guy. AV guy, excuse me. All right, Brian, Sylvia.
Here.
Dave Palazzetti.
Here.
Brian Mahoney.
Here.
Kate Massenanti, I'm here. Luke Murray.
Here.
Chip McGare.
Here.
Terry Lynch.
Here.
Michael Pajazza.
Here.
Jim Manny.
Here.
And Bob Littlefield.
Here.
In the audience, we have Kate from left field, Kathy from SLAM, Mark from Gilbane, and Phil from Studio Jade. And I got everybody's name right that time. Yes! All right. We're not live yet online. I'll talk slowly now. No? All right, there we go. Heard my lovely voice. All right, business item number two, community correspondence. My understanding is there has been no emails or correspondence sent to our skschoolproject@gmail.com. So we'll just move on to new business item number three. It's a large agenda item, kinda did an all-encompassing discussion action regarding the South Kingsdale High School project review and advise regarding proposed value engineering and cost reduction strategies, which will include an overall update, direction for SLAM and Studio Jade resulting from last night's joint town council school committee guidance, if applicable and appropriate, and I'm happy to say it is both, and then from their discussion of next steps. So if Kate and/or Phil, Kate Turner and/or Phil, I'm not talking about myself in the third person. If you want to come on up to the microphone, like I said, we had a great, I thought last night was a very productive meeting, great response, and I believe even though a vote was not taken, clear direction was given. So Kate, if you want to take it?
Yes, thank you, Kate. So we don't have an updated presentation. We can go through the same presentation that we showed last night, just to give everybody an update as to where we were and the items that we discussed. Very similar presentation that we gave at the beginning of December to this group as well. Yeah, do we want to skip ahead just to the VE options? Phil gave a great presentation, very, very thorough and technical presentation about the pros and cons of the geothermal system versus the air-cooled chiller loop. Talked a lot about life cycle analysis. I won't try and put any technical words in Phil's mouth. But essentially, it sounded like we had some direction from town council last night to move away from the use of geothermal at the high school. So we are looking to capture that $2.8 million in savings as we move forward, designing a very energy-efficient system within the all-electric system within the high school, not reliant on geothermal. We do have the one geothermal well that will provide a learning opportunity for the CTE program. It'll provide a certain level of heating and cooling for that space. Obviously, not big enough to do any substantial square footage heating or cooling, but it is a pretty cool opportunity for them to understand how a geothermal system would work. So it is not an effort in vain putting that test well in. All right, as we move forward, this was...
Can I just make one?
Yes.
Just because we didn't go over the slide about the funding, I just wanted to highlight that in this presentation last night, for anybody who's watching this meeting who didn't see last night's. One of the reasons to go away from the geothermal was looking at the 20-year life cycle cost, and it was about $1.6 million more over 20 years to go geothermal rather than the air chillers.
Correct. It does have a higher upfront cost and a higher maintenance cost over its life cycle. Correct. All right, if we go into the next VE item, this really is, was more of an informational directive where the civil team and Studio Jade are continuing to study this as we finalize our site plans. This would be the reduction of the underground storm retention systems. And replacement would be above-ground storm retention ponds, not actual ponds that retain water, but they are water filtration above ground. They will continue to discuss the feasibility of it as the site plan is developed and working with the facilities department to understand how they would be maintained and ensure they're able to be maintained so they are, remain beautiful, as beautiful as they were the day they were installed, and we're also not creating any safety issues onsite as well. So that is still under development, but we are targeting a potential savings for that as we move forward.
Can you, I thought it was a great conversation on this topic when, I believe it was Councilwoman Bergner, asked if these were going to be ponds?
Yes.
And by, obviously, if you're not in on the vernacular, you're gonna assume that's exactly what they would be. So if you don't mind a little bit explanation like we did last night, just super brief what it might look like.
Yes, so they are depressions wells almost that are dug into the site. They have special soils, under drains, and plantings that help the water permeate through the soil naturally versus being contained within an underground retention system. So they are meant to discharge all of the water within the pond after a rain event within about 24 hours. So they are not intended to hold water at a regular basis. All right, the next item, the deletion of the walking track. There was great support for this item for the removal of it, being able to capture the $634,000 savings. Again, dependent, the team will come back to this committee with the final layout, understanding that it will not be in this exact configuration. The auditorium balcony, there was a strong support in keeping the full amount of seating and keeping the balcony by town council last night. So the architectural team, SLAM's team, will still work with their theatrical consultants at potentially reducing the size of it by a half a structural bay or potentially a full structural bay. But the priority is to retain the full seat count so that we can house the full student body and have expanded community use of this space as well. So I do believe they'll vote to keep this in, and we will be looking for other opportunities to fund the $544,000. The coral room, again, the town council was very supportive of the arts programs. They did lean towards keeping the coral room intact as a part of the base scope of work. So again, we'll be looking for alternative ways to fund the just shy of $600,000 for keeping the coral room intact. The reduction of the perimeter, this was left as an open item dependent on the review with Chip and Brian of the proposed spaces, and if they feel that these are going to be adequate for the full amount of students that will be learning in these spaces. And if they are, if they are felt to be too tight, then this option will not be selected. And I think the council was in support of the directive of you, Chip. If you feel that when you lay this out, that it is an appropriate reduction, we'll move forward. If not, then we'll skip the reduction.
So on this topic, I just want to, I just want to express, like, the purpose and goal of the high school is to retain our existing students and/or attract new students. And it goes along the same line of discussion as the coral room and the auditorium. And if we, we want to be cautious on this particular one, because if we squish too hard and only our current body can fit, then that leaves us no room for any potential growth. But also being cognizant that we have to find another $266,000 if we don't squish enough.
Yes.
So kind of keeping it all in mind, understanding, like, we can't have our cake and eat it too, so we need to figure some things out. But also, we want to make sure we're not restricting our future growth opportunities.
Yes, and also to keep in mind, this number is based on 12 inches shrinking. If we want to shrink it by six inches, we can, we can look to meet somewhere in the middle and capture a little bit more savings, but still keeping the classrooms at a functional size.
I see you have, you had 24 seats for the, for the science classroom labs. Is that accurate? Is that what you were projecting?
That's what our programming is based around.
Yep. Okay. And then you were shooting, you were shooting for 27 for the standard classrooms? Okay, thank you.
Before we move on, does anybody else want to comment on this particular topic?
I just thought, I think it's a good point that we want to do this right now. We don't want to say yes to cutting off a foot, and then in three years from now, we're changing room layers, or five, 10 years from now. To give the example that one of the teachers had brought up to me recently was, a lot of the interactive touchboards we're using that we're ordering are 80 inches wide. Some are mounted, some are on carts, but that's just the technology that's coming to the room now in five or 10 years. So possibly taking some inches off the building, but without, you know, allowing, restricting future growth, I think is one of the concerns that we're seeing from the teaching population.
Thanks, I'll just add that it's, I mean, it's a big number, 266,000, but out of the entire program, it's a very small amount of a bigger number. And I just think personally, you're setting yourself up for 40 years of problems down the line for saving $200,000. And to me, I just think it, it's not a good decision. I would, it's gonna be more crowded, and, you know, even if it fits, it's just gonna be a little bit tighter over time. You know, furniture changes, your idea about the screen, the screens only get bigger. You don't want them to be going in a classroom and then all of a sudden feeling really tight. So I think standard-sized classrooms, which is what the original scope of work was, is the way you should stay. And if we can hopefully find savings throughout, we still are carrying a $7 million owner's contingency. It's only $200,000, and I don't think the pain's worth the gain.
So just a concern that I have as well, that is, you know, from a collective bargaining. So if that's a chemistry classroom, that if for some reason, science teachers can have a max of 24, yet other bargaining unit members or other departments get class sizes at other amounts, there is inequity there, as well as cutting off potentially the sciences to larger class sizes and to more students where that, you know, obviously, that stem and steam is going to be, you know, essential of the core.
Yeah, and something I would point out, building off that, is that right now, our physics, biology, and chemistry classes are capped at 24. The reason being, the labs that you've seen that they have to go, that they have to share are max seating of 24. So that was the way they were designed. But if you're taking an elective science, you're gonna be at like 20, you can be at 27. So it's, so it's a little bit, it's interesting there, like, so right now, it's not a big deal because if I, because all of our classroom, most of our classrooms are designed to fit 27 students. But if I have to take that class to our current science labs, I'm capping it at 24, because I know when we get in there, it's a safety issue if I've got more kids than, than seats in there. But if I have a class that doesn't, a science class that doesn't use those labs, then I, then they can be up to 27. So it's a little complicated from that standpoint. So my question there would be, if I'm teaching a class that currently, like, let's say, a non-biochem or physics, they, they would be tight in that room, correct, if it was another science class?
Sorry. So maybe we misunderstood the directive on size of classrooms for science. Our understanding was that 24 was your cap. If it's not, then we need to revisit this and figure out how to put four more kids in all those science rooms, which is just gonna make you, if they're smaller, they're gonna be tighter. And so I'm glad we're having this conversation so that we can understand that perhaps we misunderstood the science teacher contract, all those reels, those realities of...
And I wouldn't say that you misunderstood a directive. I think it's just that as we're getting more into the details, we're starting to like, you know, when you're looking at, when I shared with you the, the class caps, right? Like, you would, you would have seen biology, chemistry, physics with, with 24. It's like, so I don't think, and we've never really discussed it. So I, I think it's as simple as that, but it's just when, if we get into something like tides over time, or Project Lead the Way biomedical class, we're not capping those at, at 24, we're capping those at 27, so...
And would they have, would they be taught in a science space?
Well, that's, that's potentially, yeah.
Okay.
That's, they could. Right now, the classes that I just mentioned are taught in, in science rooms, but they're not lab spaces, right? So it's like, in theory, they could be, they could be taught in other classes, but it's just, you know, I, I kind of like the way Dave phrased that. It's like, do we, is this, is it worth squeezing right now, like, when we, when, we can't, we can't ever expand it again, right? And so it is definitely something to think about.
So is it recreating a constraint of our current reality that we have an opportunity to not have in our future reality?
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure we hadn't misunderstood a...
So then I want to also make sure that we're clear with a direction for you to go in. I want to make sure that you are, you don't walk away from it going, "I don't know what they want."
I would walk away right now saying, "I don't know what they want."
Okay. So how do we rectify that? Is that something where you guys can kind of regroup again and really kind of hash out? And when I say you guys, I mean Chip and...
So I think there's a movement afoot for you guys to tape out, or however you were gonna evaluate the sizes of one of these. I mean, from the layouts of the furniture, here, you can see what kind of elbow room you have in those particular configurations. I will say that the laboratory configuration that's up there now, that would be a fixed stationary science module table. In some of the other labs, like physics, they're movable, so you, you have a little bit more wiggle room as far as how you set them up. But those would typically have a sink in them and everything else, so they don't, they don't go anywhere. So if the request comes back to be able to have 28 in a classroom, we need to just reconfigure that slightly differently. I will say that we were happy to see your 24s, because there are some protocols out there in the science world that 24 is sort of a magic number for a lot of reasons. But we have a lot of districts that by contract, they teach to 28, so we make the classroom so that it can fit 28. So I don't want you to think that there's a restriction on how we could figure it out. It's more about what's most appropriate for you.
Yeah, and I think we can, we can certainly, you know, take a look at it. I mean, I do appreciate you giving us those drawings, because that was definitely something I asked for last time, so thank you. I think we'll have an answer for you in the new year, but my inclination is probably that I'm not sure that squeezing is the, we might lose some flexibility that we want for what in the grand scheme of things is not a ton of money.
Kathy, refresh my memory, how many, how many rooms are there with the 24?
Of the science rooms?
Yes.
Six?
Okay, so that...
Because they're stacked.
So if, if, if those rooms are, are limited to 24, that's six spaces that are ostensibly obsolete for any other class to use, which takes away your flexibility when you're building, when you're building your schedule to be able to put a class, like a Project Lead the Way or something, or just use your imagination, where, where you may very well have 27 kids in, in that class. You can't use that space. And you'll be, you'll be, you'll be cursing the decision that we made here.
Yeah, and it's something we've talked about, certainly about like construction tech too, like, we're capped at 16 right now. And I'm not saying that I want to flood it with 27 kids, but if we have flexibility, if like we were adding 17 or 18 kids in there. And I know that space has been a, you know, a generously, a generous sized space. So I think we haven't had to have conversations about capping because of the size. So I think that's, capping based on safety, I think, is where we should be. And I, you just brought that up with science too. A lot of the sciences are capped at 24 because of safety concerns, right? Because you're watching all these kids use chemicals, and how many can, can one teacher supervise for that? But yeah, I think it's, I think everyone's kind of making the same point about the concern about the long-term decision of squeezing at this point.
Is that clear or as mud?
Clear as mud. So do we keep them the way they are?
Final decision, final decision coming, like, but, so let us chew it over a little bit more, but the leaning is towards leaving them without, without bringing in 12 inches. But let us just kind of look at a few things, like Brian had offered to help me, and I'm sure Michael would want to weigh in too, and just make sure that that is the right decision to not do it. But with, with what you've laid out for us, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a timeframe that you would like to, an answer by?
Well, I always have a timeframe.
Say it.
You have a timeframe.
You can say it.
So we are, over the holidays, Mark is digging back in and looking at all the things that are changing. But we could sort of ignore the academic tower to some degree for now. And in January, if the decision is to, we'll deal with that then, because it's, it's a little bit separate from all the other things that we need to go back in and look at.
Okay.
I don't want to rush you, because it's a really important thing to figure out.
It is, but...
Obviously, the sooner the better, but...
Also, kind of what I'm hearing is that the folks, the educational leaders at the table, and, and the folks who have been, experienced this in their other life, is that it probably isn't advisable to squeeze. So I'm, so while we want to confirm that that is true, it does sound to me like we don't want to squeeze. So if that's helpful.
Okay, and I can also mark, ask Mark to think about, other than attacking classrooms and that academic tower, is there something else he can think of that skin is a foot out or something, somewhere else?
Shrink it from the top. I'll be short on, because we're all hunching over our laptops, so it'll be fun. Kidding.
One thing I just did want to ask about the construction tech, the, and the music spaces, the ceilings are higher, correct, in those, in those places?
Higher than normal, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, they're not like...
That's what I mean, higher than the classrooms and so forth, yes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
We had talked about dropping them in our value management, because right now, they're really tall. So there, we, compared to what you might have seen in some of the renderings, that was one of our VE items, was to bring the overall height of that area down some, but not down to normal.
So is there like a recommended height for, like, by ride for those things?
Not by ride, but by acoustics. So that's why we need to go back and talk to our acoustics guy and say, what's the, sort of the sweet spot for coral band? Not so much for tech ed, that has more to do with what do you want to do in that space? And how much headroom clearance do you want to, you know, be able to build things and not...
Right.
Not have to build them sideways, because you can't build them straight up in there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chip, I just had a question on the, when they're doing the science teaching now, is it, are those the fixed benches, because they have sinks in each one, and they're still doing bench science?
So that, that's one of the things that we're, that we're starting to talk about with the furniture, because some places are, like, in science, they have, they, the tables are movable.
Right.
And whereas like your, your gas, your water and so forth would be on the exterior of the room, because obviously, you can't have it in a spot that, that's movable. So that's a decision that ultimately needs to be made, is do we want to go, which route do we want to go with that? Do we want the more flexible bench spaces? Or do we want fixed? Because with fixed, you can do more stuff with it, but they're fixed, they're not going anywhere.
Right. And that's why I was questioning, because I don't know the difference between high school and college, but what we've done is now, we do the, kind of one wall, we'll have the, the fixed bench cabinets with a couple sinks and the, and the gases. And all the tables are on wheels, they're just rolable tables. And we have pull-down electric over the heads, so if they're doing physics and they need to plug something in, they've got power from the top. And everything can be then rolled out, and you can turn it into a regular classroom, other than the fact that you lose one wall to the, the sinks and the, and the chemicals. But I don't know, at high school, you might want to have more hands-on.
In my opinion, we should be, we're supposed to be preparing kids for a college and career, so we really should be matching more what they're, what they're gonna be seeing in that, in that next stage. So if that's what URI is doing, for example, and other colleges are doing that, if industry is doing more of that, then it would make sense that our rooms more closely resemble that.
Just because I don't want you to think you're gonna miss the opportunity to continue to have that conversation. As we step into DD, those are the levels of conversation we want to have about really specific things in all the rooms. And be able to bring best practice, or what, you know, what students might move to in the next, or what they might move to in industry if they go, you know, career tech and go right out into a workforce.
Yep, and this is probably a good time to just mention this to the committee. So we have, we have six teacher-led committees at our school right now, getting, helping us get ready for the, for the new building. One of them is furnitures and fixtures, and so they just, Chris had set us up with, with a representative from WB Mason. So they started doing some prepping, they'd done some surveying of staff, they met there, they're talking about like all the different options. So they're gonna get to see some of that furniture, they've got more going on, but it's, it's good, because we're getting a lot of teacher voice in what the furniture fixtures, other things too, like our programs, what, our schedule, is this, is this the right bell schedule that we have? So they're, they're really doing a nice job of getting prepared for this new building, and, and this is similar to what we did with Niasq, where we just had teacher-led groups that got us prepared for that. So we kind of used that to, to shift into this, and, and it seems like people are, are into it, so...
So just to further beat that dead horse, so I appreciate your staying there. The fact that they're thinking about that, and that fact that they're considering doing benches, you know, fixed cabinetry on the wall and flexible furniture, goes back to the reason why you would not want to narrow the size of your classroom, because that bench is gonna take up three feet on the, on the wall, so I just, as you're making that decision.
So not to belabor this particular point, I am curious, because when it comes to future and technology, we do not know what that looks like in our current, like, five years from now. We can safely assume that we're still using the same type of technology for our sciences that we're looking at right now. 15 years from now, we have no idea what we're looking at. I'm curious if there's any consultants that you're working with as far as the educational planners and technological planners. Are they looking forward? Because, like, water fixtures and benches may not exist in classrooms anymore, because we're doing all, everything, AI, AR, VR. So I'm, that, just out of curiosity, is that being like, are people actually looking into that?
Yeah, and we're seeing that more at, at the college level, obviously, where there's more robust funding, as well as students with more robust skills. But we have medical schools now where, you know, they have the on-immage tables, but they also have, they put the goggles on, and, and they're, it's gross to me, but they're, they're doing anatomy on it as if it's right there, right? And they're taking pieces off, and it's, it's very weird. But yeah, there's a lot of that stuff coming.
But it's reality, and it is the future, so...
Right. And, and so to your point, you know, it's not, it's, there's a lot of virtual that I can't even imagine how it's gonna be. But to your point, what's the infrastructure that supports that? And it's, it's mostly power and tech, you know, yeah.
So we need to make sure, yeah, that is where we kind of focus, because the 80-inch screen that's on the wall is no, is now part of, we all are wearing Ray-Ban glasses, and it's talking to us like Oprah. So, all right, that was on Oprah. Sorry. I saw a clip on it, and she, it was talking to her, little Ray-Ban glasses, she like scanned the room, and what am I looking at? And it explained the entire room to her little earpiece, so...
That's terrifying.
It's a real thing that's coming, that I'm not interested in, I'm gonna be living in the woods, and y'all can deal with it, but...
I'll be there with you.
Yeah. Anyway, go ahead to the next.
So from a timing...
So from a timing standpoint, while we, while we got informal direction last night, the council's not going to be voting until January. So I would say let's get all of our ducks in a row before the council meeting when they actually make a formal motion to accept or to not accept. And we can give them directive at that point. I'd also ask if you guys can help us in giving formal direction as to whether the science labs need to fit 24, 27, or 28. Because we do need to let the architect space plan for that directive specifically. All right, and then there was quite a bit of conversation on the exterior. Similar conversation to what we had at our last building committee meeting as well. There were a few requests to see the current renderings and the current design so that they can study that a little bit more in depth. But I think everybody was unanimously in support of revisioning the exterior to be more aligned with the previous visioning sessions.
And I'll have to say, just kind of listening to the council last night, while they had concerns about reduction in glazing in windows, I have full faith in y'all that you understand that we're not going back to windows this big. There was like, that concern was being voiced, which I appreciate, but I understand you guys understand also what it is.
No prison windows, daylight's still a very important feature in the building.
So RIDE actually does you a favor. They have requirements on window sill heights, like they can't be above a certain height. So you can't, I had an elementary school group ask once if they could be at six feet high so that nobody could shoot in the windows at them. I said, no, RIDE makes you put them down low. So, because you have to actually be able to look out. But they also give us directives on the amount of glazing in a classroom, you know, per the, what the square footage of the floor is. And that at least two of the components have to be operable, so. Those are givens.
Thank you.
So what, there was, there was some discussion about, there was a feeling that they had seen some of the concepts and, you know, the newer concept. So I guess my question is, when would we expect to see an alternative concept that would incorporate the value engineered reductions? Because we're going to have to, if, let's say we're past the decision time and we come back and there is kind of a pushback of, boy, you really took this way too far. Then we, you know, then what?
So it's going to be developed during design development. And there are going to be plenty of other engagement sessions. So you will not be handed something and forced to live with it. This is really a target. This isn't a specific, we are going to 100% redesign in exactly this parameter. There is still quite a bit of design exploration that the architects will need to do to get to the right vision. And they'll be coming back to both the working group OAC and the building committee with progress to be able to make sure they're going in the right direction before we finalize DDs. So in the next few months, you'll be seeing updates.
Come on, Kathy. Just stay in here. Yeah. So as we step into this next phase and we understand more about where we would like this all to go to, we can help you understand it in a variety of ways. We can bring our model live and literally walk around it once we start making things and have some conversations about stuff, right? It's hard for us to think of it as designed by committee, right? That's not what, I don't think that's what you're necessarily intending, but we still want you to be happy with the project, right? It needs to be what you, as a community, can support. So I think we need to have some conversations about how long will it take for us to redo our model and redo, you know, things. But other, like all you've only seen is one rendering, right? That's almost not fair. But as we get into the next phase, we can almost start giving you more than you can probably digest as far as being able to understand it better.
I think, and I agree, it's not necessarily designed by committee, but to Luke's point, as long as we can set an expectation, it doesn't have to be like, we want pictures by January 12.
No, but-
We want you to tell us by February 14th, we could have a rendering that shows you all angles that we can present to the town council and the school committee. So we can say, okay, by this time, we can do this. But we don't want to set an unrealistic expectation for you, but we want to be able to set expectations for them.
I guess what I would like to be able to engage in is a little bit more of a workshop as opposed to us getting to a point where we're showing you, you know, highly rendered images and it's still not it yet, right? Let's find some in-between steps before we go, you know, full bore, really rendered. Just because they're more intensive to get done. And why render something if it's not where we want to end up yet, so.
Do you have a timeframe where a workshop would be reasonable?
No, not yet. I need to give Mark some time to digest all of this at once because it's not just a wrapper that's different now, it's some of the other pieces, like the bump on the back that we need to have some better thought about.
I definitely want you, like, I don't want to feel like we're pushing you for a date. We want you to tell us.
Yeah, let us come back to you. I just can't, I don't want to give you one now and come back and change your expectations.
And you sit down and Mark's texting you going, what are you doing?
What did you agree to?
I get it. But that's a great next step to be able to plan for going forward is a workshop.
Yes, absolutely.
Does anybody have any other points, questions on this topic? Okay.
I think next on the agenda is Curtis Corner.
Next item, business item for discussion action, Curtis Corner Athletic Field update.
Phil, you're up.
Take it away, Phil.
Thank you, Kate. So I'm very excited to be able to share what we're thinking at Curtis Corner. I know, Terry, you've been very patient waiting for this. I'm certainly interested in your feedback and I want you to understand what our thought process is. I don't know if you've all had a chance to look at the presentation that I sent out this morning, so I do want to go through it methodically so you have an idea. One of the most important things is to recognize that we will be designing this to the budget. That's going to be absolutely the most important thing to start. And that may mean that the project has a limited base scope of work with some ad alternates that we may be able to pick up. And we are absolutely comfortable doing that. Yeah, no problem. We also want to make sure when we look at this project, we think at the big picture. Because this is a large campus that can grow and develop over five, 10, 15 years. Who knows what will change, how funding may become available, or there may be some opportunities that you at least want to make sure that we have planned for going forward. So let's start with the overall site image here. I think the best way to orient yourself is to recognize where the tennis courts are, for example. Those are existing. The administration building to the south of that, that's existing. Recognizing those two points, you can orient yourself. One thing you'll see here is that we have suggested that we would abandon that road that loops around the admin building and those tennis courts leading to the back where the park is. And make a more centralized entrance at Curtis Corner Road that comes into the site. You see, the first thing we have identified here is a future pickleball court. We want to make sure if this is the final location for that, that it is planned for. Although I do not think that is part of base scope of work. We could identify it as an alternate that may help the town if they want to pursue funding for something like that or parks and rec. But we want to make sure we have the area identified, make sure it's accessible to parking. The tennis courts, right now, existing, they would remain. The parking in front of the admin would be adjusted, expanded, extended along this new road that circulates through the field. You're going to then recognize the track and field, is it generally in the same location? So our athletic consultant had worked with us, Dave Palazzetti had the opportunity to be on a call, where we looked at how we could fit an eight-lane track with a larger synthetic turf field for soccer within the boundaries of the wetlands and the property line. And using this particular design of an eight-lane track, it all fits. There was discussion previously about drainage in that issue. We have examined that, our engineers have been out there. It looks like work that may have been done, I don't know, maybe 15, 20 years ago, has improved that situation. But when we come back with a new synthetic turf and track, we're looking to elevate that entire surface by, oh, a number of feet because there is a, an extensive underground drainage system that is required under this. So any drainage issues that you're experiencing in that area, I am absolutely confident we will be mitigating it. Number one, because we're raising everything. Number two, because of the technical structures that need to go underneath of this whole thing to control drainage. We're able to raise it and move it. Now I wish, can you zoom in a little bit there, Luke, into the existing field house and bleacher area? Okay. You see that little building between the bleachers? That is your existing press box concessions and restroom building. We toured that building, we have the drawings of that building. That building is adequate for the current needs and probably can be relatively refreshed to continue to serve as restrooms, concessions, and press box. What we can do is enhance that area with new bleachers, new concrete plazas so that it becomes more of a gateway into the stadium. It is able to accommodate the concessions. We are proposing two new bleacher systems there, one on either side. Total of both combined, 750. And although we would like to retain the pole lighting that is there for the track and field, we're not going to be able to, it's just not positioned correctly. So part of the base scope of work in our mind would be new track and field lighting. Then you have this large bar building you see with the sloped roof. So we have looked at the drawings of Curtis Corner. We can retain that portion of the building which houses some bathrooms and a number of classrooms. And looking at the drawings, the sanitary in that building runs in the direction towards the bleachers, right? So it's not like if we tried to keep this portion of the building, that the sanitary is running in the wrong direction. It's running in the right direction. This building was designed and constructed so that it has corridor load-bearing walls that are block, which means on either side where there are a number of classrooms, home ec rooms, et cetera, you could blow all of that out. You could create a number of spaces in there. Locker rooms, team rooms, referee rooms, storage. We have identified that as a potential adaptive reuse for a student athlete facility. Weight rooms, training rooms, et cetera. That is not part of the base scope of work. None of it would be part of the base scope of work other than just stabilizing the two ends where we would be knocking the rest of the building off. Other than that, it's just an enclosed shell. You could come back later with new mechanical systems. That's why we have suggested this pitch-to-roof over top of the building. You can enhance the facade when we do the mechanical systems, add windows, delete windows. But that could be an absolute standalone project. Building is just there. Now that means that we need to plan around it. Parking, expanded parking, et cetera. So our engineers are looking, this layout of planning and parking that we did, that is an architect's version. That's a site civil engineer will have a much better parking idea for that area. Now we can go ahead and zoom out, Luke, and you'll see that we would at least plan for in the future how you could expand parking. Right now, we're saying that would just be grass area that's flat for additional parking. Maybe that's stoned area, et cetera. But we can look through some renderings just so you can get an idea of what we're thinking. Luke, you just want to run through them and then we can come back to the site plan. This is just an idea of how you could brand that building because now that building, future student athlete facility is front and center to this complex. You see the existing field house that you have now, the new bleachers and the track and field beyond. Next. Again, this is looking towards the existing field house, recognizing that to the right, that building does have some elevation changes. That's why we wanted to represent that accurately. Looking from the new field back to the new bleachers. Both sets of bleachers handicap accessible, aluminum, what you would expect. But we did move them closer to the 50-yard line. That's one of the reasons. There you get a good shot of what we're thinking. We wanted to make sure there's enough building around the concession stand for people to come at halftime and use the restrooms, enter the facility, control ticketing and manage crowds. But also to the left, you can see how the end of that building could serve as where the football team or the soccer team would go at halftime. Shoot right down to the left side of that bleachers and into that team room. The field, the student athlete facility is what I'm calling it. I didn't want to say field house because sometimes field house, people think of indoor tracks and indoor fields. That's not what this is, even with a sloped roof, that's not what this is. This is adaptive reuse of a school building for a number of different types of spaces. Next. That's just looking in the other direction and there may be one more. Again, to the left, you see how you could start using that facility from the, from the field. So we could go back to the site plan and I'd be happy to answer any questions. What our plan is, is that our site civil engineer will be documenting this in a way that Gilbane would be able to offer a cost estimate as they did previously. In terms of timing, I know Gilbane would probably need about three weeks to estimate it. Our engineers will need a few weeks to put that, to give them engineered drawings as opposed to these concepts. So I'd probably say we will know where we are within that $11 million budget, I'd say by mid-February.
Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns for Phil, Terry? Oh, Jim?
Thanks, Mike, I appreciate you caring about me. Luke and I were talking today. When this is explained to the public and the town council, we assume they know what we know already. And sometimes it's fact and sometimes it's not. But one thing that, that $11 million for this, this part of the project right here, I think it needs to be explained a little better when we're explaining it, that this has already been value engineered down from where it was substantially. And I don't know if that was quite clear last night. So that, the way the explanation came out is, hey, this is our budget, this is what we're doing and this is the way it's going to be. But from, when Luke and I were talking today, it's been substantially value engineered, correct? Like almost half, is that correct? So I think when people hear that, they will know, okay, we already did a lot of work to make this affordable. And that's, that's the point I wanted to make, thank you.
So that building, is that going to be, is that money that we're going to have to raise to use that building? Or is that building going to be part of this?
Currently with the budget, I don't see any funds being allocated to that building today. Something may change and it may be possible, but then that's going to involve some discussion- Something may change and it may be possible, but then that's going to involve some discussion with the school building authority as well. Where I think we have some latitude is improvements to the existing field house. And then, I think that's going to be as far as you get. But I, I'd love to give you more, I just don't know yet.
So, in terms of what we're, what we're seeing here, I see the, the top telling us what we're getting, but yet, so, is any demolition of Curtis Corner occurring is in terms of this paving that's there, is that included or, or not? So, what, so, again, on this diagram, am I, should I be limiting my sight, if you will, or my vision, or in this potentially hallucination, um, of what's listed in the box as what I should be seeing on this picture?
Yes, with the exception of where it says future student athlete facility.
So, I should still be seeing Curtis Corner? I should still be seeing the existing traffic flow?
No.
No? Oh, okay, so, because I don't, so that's why I was asking, in terms of roadways are not included?
That would be part of, that, that is intended to be part of the project.
So, the demolition, except for that portion as well as the paving, is also included? Okay. So, we might want to, if, for others who, we might want to put it into that category.
You could have like an overlay or, you know, very faded out like footprint of where it exists, right? Because that slice of a building is, that's going to be what's left of Curtis Corner.
Yeah, I, actually, I think in a future presentation to others, it would be important to start with the existing site plan and identify the part of Curtis Corner that we would intend to keep through demolition. Now, Terry, to your point about any money that goes to this building, maybe we can be creative in how we are demolishing the other parts of Curtis Corner and then stabilizing this part of the building to make it obviously safe. Um, we're, we're going to want to keep it dry. And, and I would probably also say it's going to have to be conditioned. So, I would probably think that any work to that building would be associated with the demolition of the rest of Curtis Corner. So, I wouldn't say I'm leaving you with just a pile of bricks. I think we can contain the shell. Future improvements inside are probably likely not reimbursable by ride because they would consider this a field house. Because you're going to be giving them bathrooms and other things through the improvements to the other building. So, they're not going to give it to you twice, how about that? So, I do think there is a significant fundraising component to outfitting the future student athlete facility.
Right, and that, and that's where I have a little bit of an issue, is that, you know, we, we talk about the school and the school having the, um, the call room being put back in, and then we have the school where we have, um, the auditorium balcony being, being put back in. So, as, as an athletic director and I, I just feel like we're being slighted now because now I have to go out and raise, they don't have to raise that money, but I, my group has to go out and raise money now to, to, you know, fit a building that should be part of this. Like, my question is, okay, why the new road? Why can't we use the, the existing road and take that money that we would have and to keep that existing road to put into that building? And other questions that I had too was like turf field, are we building in maintenance and maintenance equipment into that, right? So, those are just my thoughts.
And, and let me walk back one statement. When I say the money for that, I'm saying it's not eligible for reimbursement. If there is funding from the town, it's just not going to be eligible for reimbursement. That's all.
What, what if we did use that space for, um, for some academics? Uh, like for example, right now, we have a personal training class, um, they do go to, um, to like Planet Fitness as part of that class, that's, that's where some of it is taught. What if they're using this facility instead? What if there's, you know, part of it's dedicated to classroom space for that?
I, I'd say that's probably a discussion after we get much farther down the road of the building. One of the benefits you have in this project is that these two pieces are somewhat decoupled, right? So, we can advance the building project, find out where we are with our, when we get to our guaranteed maximum price, see where the funding is there and how that may influence this work here. So, I don't want to say we have to, we can kick the can down the road here, we don't want to do that too much, but you do have this built in gap that benefits you in terms of knowing where you are financially.
Thanks, Phil. Um, just following on on the student athlete training facility. So, I would think that that'd be something we would do as part of the design to actually do the layout and leave it as an ad alt. So, if the prices came in and we could afford it, we have contingency at the end of the project, we could add that back in. So, I would like to see it designed and not just left as a shell.
Yeah, we have the documentation for it, so we know what kind of shape we're in for that. So, yeah.
Yeah, so how many, you know, so what we need for a training room, what we need for meeting room, locker space, things like that.
Yeah, and I, I'm happy to do that, so.
And then you have a document that even if it doesn't, if it doesn't make it to the main project, you have got a design that you can then go to fundraising with, or they can make up the delta if necessary. But, you know, we are sitting on a contingency at the back end of this project, if we get there and there's money, it could be something we accept. And I would say the same thing for the pickleball courts because if the town decides with recreation funds or other funds, they decide to do that, or there's a pickleball, um, group that wants to raise funds, you know, they can do that as well. So, I would like to see those as part of the base design, just as ad alts. And then the last question I had was, you know, we talked about different track layouts, this is a conventional radius track, correct? And we're not doing that super European D thing that we're... Yeah, it looks, it looks legit to me, it's not that more rectangular one, but I just want to make sure that we do design a conventional radius track.
I, I will have to get back to you, I, I don't want to say if it is or if it isn't. I mean, we took the drawings that they did with, and, and put it here, so it all works.
Yeah, no, I think, I think this is the right one, I just want to just double check. So, Terry wasn't at the meeting, it was, they've got like, they, they round the corners and that kind of squares out and it's, yeah, yeah.
Like a, I killed it last time, it was like a German broken back.
It's a German broken back or something, yeah. I just want to make sure we don't do that because I have a feeling that the hurdleers will have broken backs if we try doing that.
So, I will, I will follow up.
Yeah, thanks.
Phil, I, I assume what, um, we're going to continue with the throwing areas in the upper field?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're just literally running out of real estate there.
Okay, so, I see, um, the two, um, jump pits, I'm assuming, on, on one side, I'm assuming the high jump apron is on the other side, um, pole vault runway?
Yeah, there are two runways that run parallel to the field and two runways that run perpendicular to the field and then the both, what they call the D's, the end, all of that is track surface for.
High jump one side and long, long and triple on the other?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
One, uh, small question on this one. With the dollar total we have there and other projects, is there room for storage or would that be, not that we need something massive, but, you know, to keep the hurdles and to keep athletic equipment without looking at that athletic space, is there, is that allowable by ride to build a, like, like we have now, we have a storage?
Yeah, I mean, we have to have storage and, and restrooms.
Yep, and the equipment like Terry was talking about too with maintaining the field?
Yes, there, there's area to the upper left of the track where that well is, you see that, that odd thing that's along the roadway near the corner of the runway for the, there is a well there, some type of something that we're investigating. So, you have opportunity in there.
That's the well that, um, for the field, I believe, the upper field it might be, I think, I'm, I'm, I'm not exactly sure.
Our civil engineer is looking into that because he's unsure what it is.
It's a water source for one of the fields.
So, we just know we want to maintain it, we didn't want to take anything away that we can't.
So, I, I just want to stay positive on, on the note that we originally were saying field house wasn't even plausible, right? Not reimbursable, wasn't in the budget. We'd get a building, several of us walked this building, it's in good shape, it's part of the newer addition. You know, in theory, you know, it could be bifurcated and it is in good shape, the floors are in good shape, the walls are in good shape, you could use it on the classroom concept now. So, even if it's not, you know, don't, I have a saying, it's like, don't let the great be the enemy of the good. I think in this scenario, if we were able to button it up and to Dave's point, even under an ad alt, get it to a certain state, maybe there's multiple states within the ad alt, I think that's a big win. So, personally, and, and we're getting restrooms, it solved a problem we've talked about earlier, which is, we didn't even have restrooms on the table, right? So, now we have restrooms, we have concessions, we'll need storage, but this is really positive. And we're reusing part of the building, which I think from a public standpoint might be more acceptable, that we're not just knocking the whole building down.
No, and that's my point, my, my question, so that building as it is, it's, it's, it's the area that I think, in my mind, that I think we're talking about, there's space that we can use in there if we just, it would take some work to clean it up a little bit, but, you know, there's, there's a fitness room in there that, that could be a team room, there's, there's classroom, there's a good sized classrooms in there that could be cleaned out and we could still use that stuff. So, that's my point, is that if, if we're going to go into that and use that, we'll, we can still get in there, correct?
I mean, it's the, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, it's the, it's really the utility, heating, the cooling and kind of buttoning up the shell, right? But everything else is in pretty good shape. There's more to it, I know.
There's, yeah, much more to it, like the, the suppression system and egress and technology and, and the electricity, right? There may be electrical panels there, but it's fed from part of the building that we've already demolished. So, I think to Dave's point, designing this is a good idea, if this is the direction that the committee wants to go in. Identifying it as an alternate, good idea. But I really can't tell you whether you'd be able to afford it yet or not. So, just prepare yourself that you may see something that you want, but you may not be able to have it right now.
Stormwater, Phil.
I understand.
Two other, I did have a question on the lighting, so we can't preserve the lighting and it, and it was a hope that we could preserve the lighting. Um, can, can we preserve any infrastructure from the lighting? Because the poles are one thing, right? Then you got, you switch and all the mechanicals, I don't know how old they are, but is there anything salvageable?
They're old.
They're old, yeah, all right, so, so that's a, that's a, that's a no. Um, and then the pickleball, yeah, I mean, from a town standpoint, we have other funding mechanisms when it comes to recreation, so designing them I think is a good idea. And I actually don't mind having a grass field, you know, personally, and I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm looking for others to weigh in on this, but parking is only used very short term, whereas it could be a recreational resource in alternate times. Like, we don't always have big games where everyone's parking that field out. So, to dedicate it solely to massive paving, which also comes with an enormous price tag on water management, um, I don't actually think in a, in a, in the best, even if we had the money, probably not the worst idea.
Makes a nice flag football field too.
Is the, is the, as you look at this, the lights, the light poles that are on the opposite side of where the press box is, can those be, they can't either because, is that too?
No, because the, the field gets a little wider and when we bring the bleachers in and pull them back a little bit.
No, not that side, I'm talking about the other side.
Well, we make it wider on that side too.
And not go too close to it?
Correct.
Yeah, I thought that those might be able to be salvaged, at least those two, but...
I opened this up this morning and looked at it, I was, I was really intrigued by the, uh, by the idea, I had a little bit of time, uh, I was actually trying to, trying to figure out where is the Curtis Corner building? How big is the Curtis Corner building? I was actually cutting it out and, uh, and superimposing it on my, on my print to try to figure this out. Now, this is a, this is a completely new road going into this for the most, for the most part, right?
Yeah, it is absolutely all new from Curtis Corner to the park.
I did not know that the road that goes from Curtis Corner up to the park now even had a name. It's Onion Street? Go, go figure, yes, it's Onion Street. Uh, so, so there's no, uh, you know, there's, there's nothing in the plan to demolish that road, is there, or?
Well, we're not intending to use it, uh, I don't know if it would even stay, it may become.
And if it is in fact a street, then, then, you know, do we even have jurisdiction to do anything to it? My other question, so, my other question, uh, so, um, you know, is there a, is there a way, you know, if we need to, if we need to value engineer in order, in order to get other things, is there, is there a way to, uh, to keep, to keep the existing Onion Street, uh, make it, uh, make it a little less, a little less treacherous as you're pulling in off of Curtis Corner Road, uh, and, uh, and therefore save a lot of money that way? Uh, and I'm, I was also thinking back months, months ago or when we were, uh, the, the big concern about the, uh, about the field facility was, we're putting all of this money in and we don't have bathrooms and we don't have a concession and, and we're going to be alienating people that do an awful lot of work for our student athletes. Uh, and now we have that. And not only do we have it, but we also have the potential for this other facility that we could do something with in the future. I was really, I'm really intrigued by that. But, uh, at, at least we'll have that, which is a lot better than having it completely demolished and if we're going to do anything, we would have to build it from scratch. So, I'm, uh, so I'm really intrigued by that. I, uh, I'm also concerned about, uh, and, and I raised this a year, a year ago or more about, uh, about the, about the runoff from our artificial turf field. Because currently, any, any rain that lands on our field now, it just, it permeates. Uh, now, now we have to figure out a way for that, uh, for that water to run off and do, do we have an idea of where that's going to go?
Sure, so, the, these systems are inherent that the collection is underneath of the field. So, there, I don't want to say there's no runoff, but it's, it's going to be absorbed in an underground system, it's underneath this entire field. So, we will be reducing runoff with an artificial, artificial turf.
There'll be less, there'll be less runoff?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, very valid concern, it's one that I have up in regards to that entire area, including the housing development that is behind now the safety complex, Vespio Lane. Like, I, every time something gets built up in that area, my mind, my head explodes, Dollar General, now the road floods. So, there's so much going on in that area, so I, I hear Bob's concerns and, and, and they live in my head pretty rent free, um, for the whole area. Because, but I know we've discussed this a couple times where the, the end result here could be a mitigation of current problems because of this different.
Well, because of all, all of the stormwater management regulations that our site civil engineer is going to have to accommodate for, both at the new building and at Curtis Corner, it will improve the situation. It may not resolve an existing issue, but it will never contribute more of a problem. If anything, it's intended to actually help and mitigate it. So, everything we do will be improving, may not solve a problem, but it will be improving. And here, we're going to be reducing some of the impervious coverage, by the way, when you take the building down, as Luke mentioned, that green field. That's, that's what people want to see, more natural permeation.
Does anybody else have any other input they want to?
No, I just, I think for the future presentations, this is great, I think Bob and Jim both made a good point that we're here, we see all this, which, and it's great information, but I think walking through... we're here, we see all this, and it's great information, but I think walking through town council and any new workshops we have of where, where we were looking at with some of the original designs, moving the field up to the current grass field and that, what we would have lost in that, and then now with all this work you guys have put in, we gain bathroom, field, not fieldhouse, bathroom, press box, everything that we wouldn't have had before, plus the potential for this student athlete facility, I think, would be huge. We're just walking everybody through that iteration of how you guys worked this magic, so, but it's a great presentation.
The one comment I'll add about the Onion Street piece, you will want to think of this at a large scale, for 20 years down the road, of how people will live with this complex. Come down Curtis Corner, you look to your right, you see a nice open field, you see a building in the background and stadium. You want to go to the park, so you come nice where you would expect a central, you know, entrance in and then gently curve through, see the tennis courts, the pickleball courts, and work your way back to the park. That Onion Road is just terrible back there. It's small, it's stuck behind your building, it's got the walking track that's not too far, the path there. That's why we would really encourage abandoning that and then putting something for the next 20 years.
We do want to make sure that the town folks who do all of our roadway plannings, for all we know, it's some historical Onion Road. So we don't know, we want to make sure that our, whoever's in charge of our roadways can, can navigate that for us. Because I'm trying to envision, so I know-
Maybe someone named Onion who donated the land, I, I don't know.
Well, you don't know, right, and next thing you know, we have a, we'll have a-
We'll find out.
We'll, we'll get an answer for the next meeting.
Yeah, that'd be, that would be great, because it is connect, it actually connects, no, it does not connect. There, there is an offshoot of our, our walking path, right? So there's the main walking path that goes out to South Road, but there is a little offshoot that kind of scoots up and over the hill and around the corner, so. And also keeping in mind, and I'm sure Terry's already got it on the radar, our cross-country track. And keeping all of that and just kind of understanding there's more to that land than what we're looking at. I appreciate all the work you've put into it. It is, to me, it, it, it's kind of hard to navigate these conversations. I went through it with a theater group, we'll go through it with the athletic group. And the two pieces, I want to make sure that we're not pitting these two programs against each other, because one is equally as important as the other to our, to the, to not just our school, but to our culture and our community. Sometimes we look at it and the original, obviously the original vision is so beautiful and wonderful and then we go through the value engineering and it's like, well, that's disappointing. But it's not, like, that's not disappointing to me. And I think to Luke's point, it, it actually is exciting to, to look at and to try to reimagine. But it also is, it can be a little deflating, because our eyes are always bigger, you know, than our stomachs and, and our wallets. We, you know, anybody who's going through, I want a new bathroom in my house and I'm gonna have this beautiful rain, you know, shower and a walk-in shower and, and then next thing you know, you have lips and ledges and you just have a little tiny handheld nozzle. So it's all part of the process. It can be defeating, but at the same time, we have to kind of wrap our head around that. It's, it's not going to just be a block of Curtis Corner sitting there. I would like to, to think that we can do it in a way, like you said, that we're actually making it pleasing to look at and that it is inhabitable, or habitable, excuse me. So it may, we, we may have to do things to it to make sure we can do that, but we want to do it and we want to include that and make sure we keep it front and center. Our athletics is as important as our arts, is as important as our sciences, as important as our math. So just kind of keeping that all in perspective. Does anybody else have anything?
Just the million-dollar question, when can we put a price tag? Because I think one of our big decisions, right, on all of this, is gonna come down to cost again. So, you know, when do you think you'd be in a, in a, taking this maybe to a level where it could be what through the initial estimates?
So if we're, if we're focusing on everything other than the block of Curtis Corner that we wanted designed, by mid-February, I can have all of the base scope and the site work and everything else. Mark and I were talking about that earlier. Moving, advancing the Curtis Corner block, that's gonna take a little bit more time. I, I don't know, it, I'd ask you, is it important for that piece to be known? Because I-
I would say it depends on the cost of the rest.
Sure, yeah.
If you come back, a suggestion would be focus on the field, right? We need a field and that piece could be estimated, right? If that's $10 million, we don't have a lot of play with beyond that, so we're gonna have to make some tough decisions. If that's $6 million, then we know we have a little more latitude to start picking away at the rest of the concept. That's my suggestion, if that's reasonable.
I'd say as we go through our meetings, we can advance the design of the building block to see what it could be. Our engineers will be advancing the technical part of the field and the track and bleachers and roadwork so that Gilbain can estimate it. And then in mid-February, we'll have that number and then the block of, the block building may follow several weeks after that, depending upon where we are first. But at least we can feed you something along the way.
Can I just ask this question, and I may not even have, and I know I keep asking this, but, for that field, for, for Curtis Corner, where it is right now, the playing surface, can I plan to have spring and/or fall sports out there in your estimation? I, I gotta start planning this stuff, our schedules are already in.
I think that's a, we want to have our discussions with Gilbain and Leftfield ourselves to make sure we understand where we think a magnitude of this project is. And in terms of schedule, how long it would take to do something and then also rope in our civil engineers to see how long any regulatory process piece is. So I would probably say it's going to be after the new year before I could probably tell you that.
Obviously, in reference to this spring, this, this spring coming up.
Yeah, I'm talking about this spring coming up, can I, can we use the field?
Yeah, because I was gonna say, because no work is being done in-
Not, not, when is this gonna be done, no.
2025.
I'm talking about can, can Curtis, can Curtis Corner, the complex that we have right now as it is, can I plan on using that for the spring and can I plan on using that for the fall? It's a two-part, two-part question, I guess.
I'd say spring, yes. Fall, we need to discuss the demolition of the building and see when the appropriate time is to do that and if that will impact your schedule.
But that we should know, we should know that in the beginning of the year.
Yeah, we should know that in, yeah, as we have some discussions, we'll know when we want to try to take that down. Your fall season will go to when?
Fall season will start, our first game out there will be first of September, September, second, third, fourth, in that range and it'll go till, it could go till middle of November, depending on how playoffs and stuff go.
Yeah, so, I don't, I don't want to speak for Gilbain, because they, they need involvement in this, too, but the preference is, is to demolish the building in the winter time, when people have their windows closed and we're not creating a lot of issues. For all I know, I can make them back and tell you that, yeah, we'll start demolition of Curtis Corner after your fall season. But that's not official.
Don't make a promise, but spring, yes.
Spring, yes.
Fall?
Maybe.
Maybe, most likely, but possibly not. But, yeah.
To make my life real easy, we play everything away, that'd be awesome.
And I, I would just say keep that in the future presentations, town council and workshops, because there has been a lot of people reaching out on the school department ad and in the grocery store everywhere. Hey, what month is that building coming down? When am I gonna see it? What can I do? When can I go in it? Can I take stuff out? Can I, so, all those questions have been flying at me weekly, so I think just keeping it in the presentations that, what our timeline, rough timelines looking like for the demolition of the building.
That's why Shores delivers.
Is our demo budget separate, Kate, or is it part of the 11 and a half million? It's probably the whole of it.
Phil, what's the approximate difference in elevation from the upper field now and, and the playing, and the playing surface?
No, I think it was, it's over two feet, it may be closer to three. Maybe four? Oh, well, are you talking about what we're proposing to where it is now?
No, no, what, what is it now and what are you, and, and what are you proposing?
Three to four feet? It's, I don't think it's more than four.
There's like three tiers there, so you're probably talking upwards of 10 feet total, if you're looking from that top tier. It's more than you think, I guarantee you, if you put a level on there in a transit, it's a lot.
From where, from where you get the food to the field is probably like 10 feet. That's that, where the fieldhouse is, even to where the end of the bleachers are, it starts dropping, but then there's a, there's a hill right there that goes down pretty significantly.
So just out of curiosity, where does the material come from to, to fill that?
It, it's gravel and then there's a lot of plastic dog houses that hold all of the water. So it's probably, you know, several feet of gravel. So if there is someone who has a lot of stone laying around, that would be beneficial to the project.
If only we had a gravel facility here in our community.
Crushed stone, crushed stone.
Okay, thanks.
You good?
Oh, yeah, I, I'm good, I think this is great.
I like it.
Yeah, thanks Phil, thanks for getting us back into budget.
I do, I do want to reiterate that when we're, with the, and this goes for all the, all of our presentations, if we can include as often as possible, like, possible dates and just, again, to just set expectations, but to include the information, like Terry's question, when, when these things are being planned, how it's gonna impact current school years and current sporting seasons. So it's like spring '25, fine, fall '25, tentative, winter or spring '26 is, so we want to be able to, again, set community expectations as well as programmatic expectations.
Yeah, I think in the new year, we should, we should have an internal working group session to really hammer out the details of the schedule. Behind the scenes, we've been doing a lot of work with factoring in the impacts of the value engineering efforts into our schedule and how that fits in the overall completion dates. So we'd like to work on that collaboratively and then we can present out the total project schedule once everybody is really in agreement with the feasibility of it.
Perfect, thank you. And I think that ends these item, the business item discussions, unless anybody has anything else they want to touch upon. No? Okay, then we can open up for public comment. I see a couple, a couple, three community members out there, come on up. We don't do the five-minute timer on you, but we also, we are, we are overtime. Thank you, Jim.
I do have a question on the field, I'm just confused. Is the field and let's say an eight-lane track and the stadium, are they all gonna be raised three or four feet? I just don't understand the dimensions. I was, is the field gonna look like a box higher than the first couple rows of the stands?
No, the field, the field, the field will be raised to basically be even with the, the stands. See the picture right there?
Okay, okay.
So-
But is the track included in that, too?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you, I, I was gonna have the same question, where was the field coming from? Plenty available from the Washington Bridge, if we have any questions.
Are we asking regionally, is it coming, like, what, what region is it coming from, or is that where we're going with that?
Anyway, a second question I had, back before the original bond issue, Patty Alley, member of the town council, had talked to Chris Spiegel months earlier saying, no more spinning wheels, no more, I want an absolute number, specific number that you can give to us. Now, some areas he could not answer. But the square footage number was 143,900 feet that they came up with. And now I hear it's gonna be 155,000. My concern is, it looked like the first pricing was done at $825 a square foot. If we're now looking at 155,000 square feet, maybe we're down to 750 square feet. Why don't we go for 165,000 at $700 a square foot? Because we're still using probably the same footprint. And my part two of that question is, this expansion at, at the moment, from what Chris Spiegel told Pat Alley of 11,100 square feet, is that new rooms or just larger rooms? What, how does that all fit in?
You lost me on that last part of the question. Can you kind of, can you restate what you just asked, that, just that, just the end, when you're saying, is it new rooms?
If it is 155,000 square feet now, are there additional rooms, larger auditorium, bigger, you know?
I was gonna say, can, can one of my designers just? Phil's behind you, he can-
I'm happy to attempt to answer for you.
So as part of the stage two, we, we were not able to get really below 150,000 square feet and satisfy the programmatic needs at that time. Coming in at a stage two, oh, I'm sorry, stage three, schematic design at 160,000 square feet, does not uncommon for the incremental growth after a much more robust discussion with faculty and administrators. And even then, now we're backing it back down a little bit. So we could never get to 140,000 square feet and satisfy the program. That would have been a mathematical problem to, to, that's, or that number was arrived at mathematically. So our stage two was 150, we're at 160, I think we're gonna land somewhere in between.
Again, you always hate to talk about, we think, but that was Patty Alley's question, we're, we're just, and in my business, real estate, if you mess up something by 10%, you're out of business, I'm sorry. There's just, the razzle-dazzle here with the numbers is just, it doesn't look like a lot to you, but in my world, it is a lot. And so that's all I was saying, if we're on a roll here now and, you know, why not even larger? If we could get it down to 700, 680 square foot?
So I, so I think I'm understanding what you're saying is, if, if we're, we're going smaller and it's, it's the, the cost of the square foot is, you're saying, why don't we shoot for bigger and?
Why not? Why not? But-
You're the only one who feels that way, Jim.
I still don't understand that, will there be more classrooms or just larger classrooms?
So the question being, are we, have we added more classrooms or taken away, adjusting sizes of classrooms? I think that's hard to, that's hard to answer specifically, because the discussions were about programs and it wasn't necessarily like, we started with 20 classrooms and now we have 22 classrooms. It's, it's what do the programs individually need and then the sizes of those rooms? So I don't think it's as cut and dry as saying we added or subtracted classrooms.
I certainly understand that and I understand contracts and labs and I certainly hope that we can grow a little bit more in the community. In my business right now, most of everything that we sell is to older folks. And not necessarily seniors, but folks that the kids are off to college, great, now let's invest in some property and we'll, we'll make some money that way, but all of that is childless, if you will. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Go away.
You can leave it open, I'm sure someone else will come there. Anyone else?
So, can we bring that, the Curtis Corner thing back up? Just a plan view, aerial view? Is that possible? Okay, so I thought one of the number-one modifications for this new athletic field was to, was to get the field oriented true north to south. was to, was to get the field oriented true north to south. Because the way it is today, it's not oriented right. So athletes are, depending on the time of the year or whatever, they're using the field, they're looking right into the sun when it's setting. That shouldn't be, shouldn't be like that. That field should be oriented north to south. Is that what it is right now or is it, looks like to me like it's just on top of where it is now?
Yeah, you're correct. This would be very similar orientation to how it is now, from what our experts have told us.
So, do you have any?
No, I, we run into it very rarely because most of our stuff is at night. We get to a situation sometimes where the sun is setting. If you are, and our coaches have learned to, you know, to strategize with the, with the coin flip. If you win the coin flip, you want to take the right, the right way because the sun does, if, depending on what time we're starting, the sun does become a factor. But it's been like that for, what, 20, 30 years?
Okay. So I was a few minutes late on, on the things you were showing with the reductions. Did it start with the geothermal wells?
Yeah. When we were reviewing the overall, I was focused on Curtis Corner here. Yes, well, we discussed what went on last night in the meeting and how the direction was to not move forward with geothermal and that we would have the single well that could be incorporated into our, potentially incorporated into our CTE program and whatnot, but yes.
Okay. So I was, I listened to that presentation last night and I have, I have some problems with it. I don't know if you still have it on, do you still have that? Bring it up, it's like a couple slides. Unfortunately, the town council didn't think the public had the, the right to ask any questions last night after all you guys left. All right, let's start with this slide. Okay, that value right there is wrong. That value is for 40 wells, not 30 wells. So why isn't it fixed? I mean, you knew that, you knew that value was not right. So I don't understand why that number's even up there because you, you knew we weren't going to do 40 wells. Now, can we go back that way, to the left? Yeah, that's where you keep going, that way, yeah. I went the, the one with the, with the, how much it costs and everything. There we go. Now. So last night, I think somebody, maybe the town, somebody from the town council asked the question, the first cost for geothermal heat pumps, first cost, does that cost include the well field?
Yes.
All right, hold on now.
Phil Conti indicated, yes, that would include.
All right. So does that cost include a $2,800,000 well field or a well field for 30 wells? Because the differential is about $700,000.
So for all intent and purpose, when we are doing these lifecycle cost models, there is a small difference between 30 wells and 40 wells because it is not a linear calculation. So that number, I could say, is somewhere between 30 to 40 wells. It's insignificant. The most, and I mentioned this last night, the most important thing to recognize here is the delta. Regardless of the assumption we make, it carries through both lines. And it's that delta that you look at specifically at the end of 20 years to determine the most value-added project. But I'll go back and say, changing the number between 30 and 40 wells is, is insignificant.
I don't see it, I'm sorry, I just don't understand how that's possible. All right. So let's go to the, the annual maintenance cost. So the EPA, Department of, US Department of Energy, EPA, in Oak Ridge, Tennessee, National Laboratories, all say in their, in their documentation that geothermal wells, geothermal energy is the most efficient way to heat and cool a building. Now, we were told last night that today's roof-mounted chillers are close, but here's where I think there's a little bit misleading. It also, Department of Energy, EPA, in Oak Ridge, Tennessee, also say that the average lifespan, average lifespan of a geothermal well field is 50 years, number one. And secondly, none of the equipment, none of the equipment that's used for the wells or for moving the, the air inside the building to heat and cool it, none of that equipment is exposed to the weather. So the well, the well caps are below ground level and everything else is inside the building. Nothing's on the roof. I don't see how it's possible that the annual maintenance cost for geothermal well pumps can be more than the air chillers are on the roof. First of all, I doubt your air chillers are going to last 50 years. And they're going to be exposed to all the weather, all the storms. I just, I just don't think that, that number's right. I don't, I don't believe it. Now, also, it said that the amount of energy used, used to, for the chillers, roof-mounted chillers, whether or not they're cold-climb chillers or, because they have some new ones now that are supposedly cold-climb chillers. So there is some additional utility costs here because it's all run by electricity. But when I was reading about those chillers, it also, today, it also said quite often that if you're in this part of the country, if you're in the northern climes, it's, they're quite often have auxiliary, they need auxiliary heating or some side of a system that, to, to boost up the capacity depending on if it's a really cold time of the year. So I don't know if that's calculated in there or not.
Hi, Dorald. I'm not going to tell you to stop talking because I know you were not afforded the opportunity to talk last night.
I'm trying to wrap it up here.
Okay, thank you, because it's quarter of eight. Thank you.
Okay, I wrote a, I don't know if I sent this one to you. So I sent an email to Dr. De Silva two days ago explaining what's going on here. And I was, what my concern is that the, the Northeast CHIPS regulations that Rhode Island has signed on to is, is mandating that, that buildings above 5,000 or 10,000 square feet have to be built for energy savings now. But there's nothing in that Rhode Island addendum to the version four of Northeast CHIPS, CHIPS document. The Rhode Island addendum has no direct connection to anything that has been put into law by our legislators as far as funding. So the act, you know, in actuality is, we're mandated to try and find energy savings, but this 4%, up to 4% additional reimbursement, it's not, you, you still can't break the 55. They don't allow you to break 55. But, but the cost of the, the cost of these systems is such that it's almost, there's no return, there's no return on the investment. On top of which, the per-square-foot allowance for high schools is still capped at $628 a square foot. I mean, it's no wonder that districts throughout the state don't have the money to build what they were thinking they were going to build. But here, you know, it's, it's coming to roost here now because last night at the meeting, I heard the town council members and I also heard school committee members say, we don't want to get rid of the balcony, we don't want to have, we want to shrink the size of the building, you know, and on and on. So now you're going to, they're going to come, you're, you're, they're going to come back with other things where to cut. I just think it's, to me, I think it's a mistake not, not to go geothermal. Here, here we are in a, one minute. So here we are in a town whose coastline is already being ravaged by coastal storms. Our, our town beach is, it's not really a beach anymore. Within 10 years, it's not going to be usable at all, I predict. So when we were talking months ago, or last year, that we were going to, the goal was hopefully, maybe we could get to a net zero building. I can, I understand the, the monies of it. So the photovoltaics, you know, the, the roof-mounted solar panels, they will have to push that, push that one off into the future. But I just, I don't think personally that the, that it's not worth the investment in the well field for the long-term viability of the building and, and the cost over, over many years.
Thank you, Dorald. I appreciate you sharing that with us. Anybody else out there? I see another. No, we're good. Okay. So that is the end of public comment. Next meeting, do we have a next meeting on the books?
Yeah, so it's scheduled up to be the 2nd of January because it's, we're scheduled on the room, the first and second, first and third Thursday, and we're trying to be consistent on that schedule. So I have this room booked for that day, so presumably we're going to have a meeting unless, unless.
Is February, is, excuse me, January 2nd a reasonable day to expect to have any sort of updates? We don't have to have it. If there's no update, we can move, we can bump out, but also if a decision needs to be made or if discussion needs to happen, we can keep January 2nd.
Yeah, my question would be, because the larger issue is town council.
Yep.
So when would be prepared to go back to town council? That's the first question to be answered.
Right. So we are very much firm believers in not meeting just for the sake of meeting. So if there's no purpose on, a meeting on the 2nd, then we don't need to meet on the 2nd. But we have a joint, again, there's a joint session between school committee and town council scheduled for the 7th. I'm going to go out on a limb and suggest that there won't be any updates by the 7th, unless you guys tell me differently. And so maybe we move out to the 16th for our next building committee meeting, unless we need to make a decision or have a discussion before then.
I don't think there's anything on the 2nd that we'll need a decision on, other than hearing back from Chip on the size of the classrooms. That's the only thing right now that we're looking for direction on prior to going back to town council.
Does that need to be done at a, at a, at a meeting or could that simply be an email?
I think that can just be an email.
Was the town council meeting they were discussing last night on the 13th? Is that when their, their meeting is?
Their next meeting is, would be the 13th, yes.
So my only idea would be, maybe it's the Thursday before that meeting that we have a meeting here to give town council direct, with our experts, the direct verbiage of VE1, VE2, VE3, recommended from building committee, recommended from our experts, so that they can vote on it.
Is that a reasonable date for people to, the Thursday, January 9th? Is that a reasonable date to expect some sort of update from you all?
Again, I don't think we'll have anything new to present, but if we have direction on the size of the classrooms, we can discuss that and formulate the motions moving forward for town council.
I think what we need to clarify is what we're asking from council, right? So if we're not going to be going geothermal or whatever, right, they can vote on it or not, right? But if they don't vote on it, like the only thing to be voting on is authorization of additional funding, whether that may be. And, and direction to us to either make additional value engineering or et cetera. So I don't know if there's a lot of new to be developed, right? So if we need to get in front of council, then.
The only thing, the only thing I can think of after we get direction on the classrooms is agreeing on a dollar value for the PEGO funding that we would request to be allocated to the project.
That's, we, my suggestion is, what's the number? Be very pointed, and what's that going to get back into the project?
So that makes me ask the question, is that something that they can discuss, that the town council will bash out on the 13th or will that be the 27th and we don't need to meet until the 16th?
I think the 9th is, like, we need to strategize as a, a school building committee, what the messaging is going to be on the 13th. They're going to expect some type of guidance on that. So I would say the 9th, definitely we should be meeting before the next council meeting. All right, it's, it could be very short, but still, we, we need to strategize what the messaging is going to be to them on the recommendation.
So we can have a business meeting on the 9th to strategize with no expectation of any sort of update unless they happen to have one?
The only thing I would add to that is that it would be appropriate at the school building committee on January 9th to give us approval to submit schematic design to RIDE, recognizing that it's changing and evolving, they understand that, but we will need official recommendation to submit to RIDE for SD. So that would be good. And if plans have developed in any form or capacity, put it on the agenda that we could provide an update.
So we'll shoot for the 9th? So we'll shoot for the 9th, is, do you know if that's possible here?
I'm looking right now. We can, we can make a bump, so we'll make it work.
Okay. So next school building committee meeting, January, you can't be here?
I'm good.
Oh, okay. I thought you were like, "No." Okay. So January 9th here, 6:00 PM. Dorold, what's up? You know, you know you're not part of our committee, right? I know you are, but you're not.
Sorry, I just remembered. So the, the RIDE regulations for a science room, it's 1,200 square feet. I mentioned this before, but I don't know if anything's done about it. So the RIDE says it's 1,200 square feet. And the, the new regulations for per square foot for a student in a science room, I believe is now 60 feet. So that means that the RIDE's space for a science room would only hold 20 students. So that's just, I don't know, when you're talking about 24, 27, or is, anyway, that's something just to think about, so.
Thank you, Dorold. I believe our experts are on top of it.
And we only need 29 wells now because we got one.
Good night, Dorold. Tell your wife thank you. Okay, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. We are adjourning at 7:53.